Hello and good evening. This is the Durango City Council Regular Meeting, June 15th, 2021. It is now 6:33. May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Buehl.
Here.
Counselor Yousaf.
Here.
Mayor Protim Knowswee.
Present.
Mayor Baxter.
Present. Thank you. Do we have any identification of actual or perceived conflicts of interest with any of the agenda items tonight by the city councilors? Seeing none, we'll move on to public participation. And I will let Mr. Sluse explain public participation, but you all will have three minutes to speak, and we'll go from there. I do see one person in the audience, Tom.
Sorry, so for anyone who would like to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony that do not otherwise appear on this agenda, now is your opportunity. I see at least one person, mayor, who has her hand raised. I will go ahead and unmute Sweetie Marbury and ask her to unmute her microphone, and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Sweetie Marbury, and I am a Durango city resident. I'm calling in tonight to recognize an employee that's leaving, and that's Amber Blake. Ron LeBlanc, the former city manager, believes in promoting employees from within the city. And Amber Blake served the city as an interim city manager, assistant city manager, director of transportation and sustainability, and the multimodal administrator. Amber wrote hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants for the transit department. I worked with Amber for eight years, and her leadership with the city will be sorely missed. I want to congratulate her on her new position with CDOT as a director. Amber will lead the state in CDOT in planning, developing, operating, and integrating transit and rail into the statewide transportation system. This includes working with buses and over 60 rural transit agencies and transit providers specializing in service for the elderly and the disabled and working in high-speed rail. Well, while Amber was a city employee and the director of transit, she was also president of the Colorado -- I can't talk -- Colorado Association of State Transit Agency. She was Transit Professional of the Year in 2012 and 2015 from the Colorado Association of State Transit Agency. In 2016, she was awarded the 40 Under 40 Award from the Commuter Transportation Association. In 2016, the city of Durango, under Amber Blake's leadership, the transit was recognized with a Federal Transit Administration Outstanding Service Award. We are losing a valued employee, a great person to work with, a joy to behold, a wonderful smile, but mainly it's her leadership at the CDOT level. I want to congratulate her promotion to a statewide recognition of her abilities and leadership. Thank you, Amber, for all of the work that you did for the city of Durango.
Thank you, Ms. Marbury. Anyone else, Tom?
I do not see anyone else lined up right now. Mayor, if you are in the audience as an attendee and you would like to provide a comment or ask a question of councilors, now is your chance. Nothing is popping up. Mayor?
Thank you very much. We have three proclamations tonight, and I really wish that we were doing this not because I wanted to be two weeks from now, but two weeks from now we'll be able to do it in person. So unfortunately, we won't be tonight, but thank you all for being here. The first proclamation is the Durango Pride Month proclamation. Whereas Durango Pride is an opportunity for our entire town to celebrate and recognize the diversity of our community and to promote and advocate for the message of acceptance, civility, dignity, and respect for all people. And whereas the city council and staff of the city of Durango are dedicated to advancing initiatives to institute diversity, equity, and inclusion, and are committed to ensuring all residents have equitable opportunities to lead peaceful, productive, and safe lives. And whereas the Durango community is a diverse public that includes people of all races, ethnicities, beliefs, national origins, ages, abilities, genders, and sexual orientations. And whereas our community strives for inclusiveness and acceptance of all our people, recognizing the resiliency and determination of the many individuals who are fighting to live freely and authentically. And whereas we embrace and celebrate our individual identities and our commonalities, we encourage the Durango community to unite in solidarity and common purpose to celebrate the diversity, shared humanity, and civil rights of all people. Now therefore, I, Kim Baxter, mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby claim June 2021 as Durango Pride Month in Durango, Colorado. Thank you. And I believe that Ryan Garcia, the chair of the Four Corners Alliance for Diversity, will be accepting this. And Ryan, would you like to say something?
Yes, indeed. Thank y'all so much. Just to begin, my name is Ryan Garcia. I'm comfortable with he, they, or she pronouns, pretty much anything with respect, I'm fine with. I am the Chair of the Alliance for Diversity, which hosts Durango Pride and works to help make our community a welcoming environment for anyone regardless of their sexuality, whether their gender, their race, ethnicity, and all of these other categories. And I think it's really important that we kind of understand pride a little bit more. People think that pride is just like a big party, and granted, yes, we are very good at partying, to be honest. But at the same time, it's really important to remember the roots of pride. Pride started in 1969 at the Stonewall Inn. It was a LGBTQ bar that was raided by police, and people were being arrested for outdated laws, like if you did not have at least three articles of clothing that aligned with your sex sign at birth, you would be arrested. And this is something we continuously face, is these unjust laws. We are constantly trying to break down these barriers that help our people thrive. Like honestly, the LGBTQ community would be much larger had we not faced so much oppression over the years, whether it's losing an entire generation, the AIDS epidemic, to people that we still lose today due to violence against LGBTQ+ community, or due to all the mental health issues that we face due to discrimination and oppression that we encounter in the world. Just wanted to do a quick little shout out to Marsha P. Johnson. She's one of the main reasons why we have pride, thanks to a black trans woman of color, which is why pride aligns so much with Black Lives Matter. So I want to just represent that real quick. With it, like, I think it's really important that we are doing much better. Our societies are evolving. We are becoming more educated. We are becoming more informed about what inclusive practices we can implement to help LGBTQ youth survive. Like, and it's sad that LGBTQ communities are only at the point of surviving. We want to see them thriving. And thankfully, Durango is heading in that direction. Unfortunately, we still have a lot of health statistics for negative health outcomes. I work in public health by trade, so I'm always going through all this epidemiology data and seeing that LGBTQ youth have higher rates for substance use, for mental health issues, for depression, for suicide. And you see this like on a national scale as well as locally. If you look at Healthy Kids Colorado, you can assess the Platte County, and you can see that our youth are still struggling with harassment, with violence, and with mental health issues. The fact that even transgender people, about 50, almost 50% of them, like, have attempted suicide before compared to like about 4% who contemplate suicide overall in the US population. It kind of shows that we still have a long way to go, and we don't realize that a lot of these microaggressions that are in our society are so ingrained in our language that we don't know that we are, can be causing harm by assuming someone's gender, by assuming someone's sexuality, by like not using inclusive, equitable language and practices. And I just want to do a shout out for all the amazing organizations here in Durango, Colorado, whether it's the Four Corners Rainbow Youth Center, who puts on support groups for LGBTQ youth, as well as transgender kiddos, whether it's Four Star Durango, who does transgender work and support groups on a regular basis. Young People in Recovery does an LGBTQ recovery group that we've been promoting a lot of since we're trying to promote sobriety, especially since our community faces those health issues. And then Four Corners Alliance for Diversity, which hosts Durango Pride and the regular events that we hold, like First Fridays, and just a place where people could feel like they belong, because here in rural areas, social isolation is one of the biggest issues that LGBTQ people face. And it's sad that this, in this day and age, like, we still aren't quite there yet. Durango does, like, well enough, but it could be doing better. Like, on the streets of Durango, I know I've been on Main Street, and it's happened at least two times where somebody driving by has yelled "faggot" at me. And it's sad to see that. Well, first of all, like, they won't say it's my face, obviously. It's sad to see that these people still are so insecure with themselves that they have to lash out to other people. Like, it's just like any other bullying situation where it's actually more the issue of the bully than the people that they are targeting. And studies show this, like, people who are homophobic actually have a correlation for more same-sex attraction. It's weird to say, but it's actually very gay to be homophobic. And I make sure to let anyone who, like, says anything negative, like, know that honestly, you are outing yourself, you are outing these aspects about yourself. And I just really appreciate that we, as a town, can come together and recognize the importance of pride. And while it is something that is mostly celebrated in June, pride is something that's year-long. We have LGBTQ people who are a part of every facet of society in Durango, Colorado. We have intersections of LGBTQ people and people of color, and we need to work to make sure that Durango is an inclusive environment for everyone. And not just the wealthy tourists that come here and spend their money. Yes, we'll take your money, but at the same time, we are going to create an atmosphere where everyone is welcome, whether, like, whether you are cisgender, whether you are transgender, whether you are straight, gay, bi, asexual, bisexual, any of them. And we are slowly but surely getting there to where, like, people can go down the street and hold hands with the person that they love. It's not a big thing. Queer people have been around since the dawn of time. We've been murdered since the dawn of time, but like, we are now like on the precipice of making sure that we have a community that is going to do better and strive to do better. And I really appreciate everyone for at least recognizing pride as a first step, and I hope that everyone continues going on to educate themselves. So, thank y'all.
Thank you very much, Ryan. We appreciate it. Our next proclamation is the Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. And so, proclamation for the Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. Whereas Alzheimer's disease, a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder, tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, the sixth leading cause of death in Colorado, and is the only cause of death in the top 10 that has no cure, no treatment, and no way to slow its progression. And whereas more than 6.2 million people in the United States are living with Alzheimer's, including 76,000 in Colorado. And whereas there are over 158,000 dedicated caregivers who provide unpaid care at home in our state of Colorado valued at over $3.7 billion. And whereas, according to the National Institute on Aging, Alzheimer's disease also indirectly costs businesses up to $40 billion a year in the United States in lost productivity for employees who miss work or leave their jobs to provide care for a relative or loved one. And whereas with early detection and diagnosis, individuals and their families can gain access to treatment medications, enroll in critical research trials, fully participate in planning for the future, and receive help and support from the Alzheimer's Association. And whereas there is a need to raise awareness about Alzheimer's disease and to honor all the caregivers who support and care for loved ones with Alzheimer's disease, now therefore I, Kim Baxter, mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim June 2021 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. And I believe we have Teresa Falco here on behalf of the Alzheimer's Association to accept the proclamation. Welcome, Teresa.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Mayor Baxter, and thank you to all of the city council of Durango. This is really so appreciated upon the Alzheimer's community. I want to recognize a few people that are here to support us tonight, including Deborah Bianchi and Erin Leifer, who are staff with the Alzheimer's Association and support this part of our state. Eric Bianchi, who is a support group facilitator for those who are caregivers and living with Alzheimer's here in Southwest Corner. Lori Valencio, Cherry Valley. David Nelson, who are with the Southwest Center for Independence. And both Eric and Lori also serve on our Walk-in Alzheimer's Committee, fantastic committee, and, and it just really emphasizes the fact that Alzheimer's is a community disease. Individuals may get Alzheimer's, but the families deal with it, the community deals with it. It goes way beyond the individuals. You did mention that 6.2 million individuals are living with Alzheimer's in the US. 76,000 of those are in Colorado, and about 700 of those are here in La Plata County, which means we have about 1,200 to 1,300 unpaid caregivers for those individuals, and that's over 2,000 people dealing directly with Alzheimer's disease and other dementia here in La Plata County. This is June, Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. It's a program sponsored by the Alzheimer's Association to bring concern and awareness not only to Alzheimer's disease, but also awareness as to what the Alzheimer's Association is doing in the fight against Alzheimer's and in order to support those living with Alzheimer's and their caregivers until we have that effective treatment or cure. Our mission at the Alzheimer's Association, as I said, is to provide care and support for those living with Alzheimer's and their caregivers, to support research into Alzheimer's and other dementia, to find that cure or treatment, and to promote overall brain health, which is a big part of Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, so that we can reduce risk so that fewer people will develop the disease or develop it later in life as opposed to earlier. The Alzheimer's Association has a number of programs and services. I mentioned support groups. We have a couple here in the Durango area in the southwest corner. We have education classes that both our staff partners and myself give to the community. If you have a group that may be interested in learning more about Alzheimer's, perhaps knowing the tendencies of Alzheimer's, we're happy to come into your, your group and deliver that educational program. We have a 1-800 number, which is, yeah, learning how to point on Zoom. There's our 1-800 number, 24/7, manned by a master's-level specialist that can answer any question, big or small, 24/7, 365 days a year. We have a great website right here. There it is, ALZ.org, full of information as well. Just let us know how we can help you. We are part of a community here in southwest Colorado and in La Plata County in Durango. We're working hand-in-hand with the Area Agency on Aging, with the Senior Center, with the Southwest Center for Independence, and so many more, so that we can build the network to support our Alzheimer's community. On September 25th, we will be having our first Walk-in Alzheimer's here in Durango at Rotary Park. We invite everyone to come be with us that day. I'm a volunteer with Alzheimer's, been volunteering for about 10 years. I lost my mom this past September. She was the eighth person we've lost on my mom's side of the family. Unfortunately, we have a 100% occurrence rate, so I'm a very, very dedicated volunteer. And I tell you that because I want you to know what the Walk-in Alzheimer's is about. It's about certainly raising awareness about the disease and what we're doing at the Alzheimer's Association to raise funds, to promote, to be able to give our programs and services and support research as well. But it's also a day of hope. It's a day for our community to come together and to let our members of our community that are dealing directly with this disease or that have lost because of this disease, that they are not alone. And that's what I love about Durango. I'm a relatively new resident of Durango after visiting here for many years and sending my daughter to college here. My husband and I made the decision to retire here because we love the Durango community. And this community has the potential. I, I know this community. I know the love that this community can give. We need to let our Alzheimer's and dementia community know that this is a concern and supportive community. This proclamation may seem like a small thing, but to us, it's huge because that community is often forgotten or ignored because it is uncomfortable. But it means the world to them to know that their city supports them. So thank you so much again to the mayor and the city council, and please reach out to us if there's anything you ever need or want. We're here to be a partner with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Teresa. We really appreciate the work that you do and the care that you give. Thank you. Our third proclamation for tonight is National Boys and Girls Club Week proclamation. Whereas the young people of Durango, Colorado are tomorrow's leaders, whereas many young people need and benefit from professional youth development programs and activities to guide them in, to achieve their full potential. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of La Plata County serves more than 1,255 young people annually. Whereas Boys and Girls Clubs do whatever it takes to ensure America's children and teens have access to clubs where they develop the skills needed to graduate high school with a plan and be well-prepared to meet life's challenges through programs including Smart Girls, Torch Club, Homework Club, Sports Play Active Recreation for Kids, STEM, Arts, and Financial Literacy. Clubs guide youth in developing the soft skills and hard skills needed to close the job skills gap. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of La Plata County will celebrate National Boys and Girls Club Week with some 4,000 clubs and more than 4 million children and teens served nationwide. Now therefore, I, Kim Baxter, mayor of the city of Durango, do hereby proclaim June 21st through June 25th, 2021, as National Boys and Girls Club Week in the city of Durango. Furthermore, I encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing and commending Boys and Girls Club of La Plata County as the community's place where kids feel like they belong, where they learn who they are and who they want to be through fun and engaging activities led by trusted adult role models. Congratulations to the Boys and Girls Club of La Plata for putting the young people of La Plata County on their path to great futures. And I believe we have Kip Coso here, a local Boys and Girls Club founder and Boys and Girls Club of La Plata County board member. Hello, Kip, welcome.
Thanks so much. I really appreciate it, and it's such a nice group of proclamations to be a part of, for sure. So we want to say thank you to the city council and Mayor Baxter for the recognition. It's very important to us. The city council and the city of Durango have been supporters of ours for the 14-plus years that we've been alive and running, all the way from former counselor Dean Brooke, who donated all his architectural experience, expertise, to turn a very beat-up armory building. Anybody who'd seen after the road and bridge crew had gone through there, and Durango Youth Baseball broke out every window, I think, in that place. So it needed a lot of TLC to, to get it up and running, and so, and I know we've had Jessica's kids at the club. Melissa's been an individual, a donor and supporter, and I could go on and on, but we really appreciate the support that we've gotten from the city council. The club, as you illustrated, serves over 1,250 kids in a given year. I just want to stress that positive outcomes, providing a safe place for these kids, and then getting them connected to positive adult role models, we think that this is just so vital. And I know I could have used more of it growing up in Durango, and I did. We're really glad to have it for the kids that we've got here now. And 61% of our kids come from low-income households. These are households that were pretty beat up over the 2020 and during the pandemic. We know that we're the affordable solution for these families that need activities for their kids when school is done at the end of the day, as well as during the summer, so they can know that their kids are somewhere safe and, and in a good place where positive outcomes are happening. They're not just daycare. They're, they're driving towards being better people. 2020 was certainly challenging for us, but we were very happy to have kept all the staff that stayed in the area, and we provided programming one way or another. Virtual certainly is not as satisfactory as in-person programming, but we did what we could for wellness checks and to keep in touch with our kids, and seem to have come out of the pandemic in pretty good stead. Looking forward to really kind of bursting onto the scenes and doing even better in the next 14-plus years. One of the cool barometers that we've got going right now is the number of kids that are outside our doors at 7:30 in the morning. We see that number going up week by week, and, and we think that means that the parents are getting into a more normal situation with work, family, they've got a trusted place to drop the kids off, and so we're seeing that as a barometer for the community getting back to normal and us playing whatever kind of role we can to help along with that. Coming up, you will see us do a pop-up club out in Three Springs to try and spread some of our geographic influence, deepen the impact with our kids, but also help out with those kids who have a hard time getting transportation from Three Springs back to the clubhouse itself and back home. So we're looking forward to that. And then the big issue that we've kind of leaned in on is the learning loss that has happened for our kids during the pandemic. We know the average American kid is about five to nine months of learning loss there. We try and put a positive spin on it, and we call it the Summer Brain Gain. And especially with our children of color, we know that they've even experienced six to 12 months of loss. And so we've hired two teachers to lean in, try and get our kids in the best headspace that they can as they head into fall for the 9R and school, and we'll do what we can to kind of overcome some of those losses that we saw over 2020. So again, my sincere thanks for everything that the city has done over the years. This proclamation in particular, we hope it's going to lead to another 14-plus years of helping our kids get onto great futures. If there's any city resident or city council member that's interested in more info, several of you know by experience that I will go on and on and on if you need it. So really appreciate your time and energy. Hope you have a great meeting today.
Thank you very much, Kip, and thank you for all the work the Boys and Girls Club does to provide an incredibly supportive childhood for our children. It's very, very important. Appreciate it. Thank you. And on we go to the review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 8. May we have a reading of the consent agenda, please, Ms. Phillips?
Items 6.1 through 6.4 are approval of minutes. 6.1, the minutes from May 18th, 2021 special meeting. 6.2, the minutes from the May 18th regular meeting. 6.3, the minutes from the May 25th special meeting. And 6.4, the minutes from the May 25th study session. Items 6.5 through 6.10 are discussion and possible action items. 6.5 concerns resolution R. 2021-31, adopting the electric vehicle readiness plan and approving a memorandum of understanding for implementation of the plan jointly with La Plata Electric Association, LPEA. 6.6 concerns adoption of the policy and procedure for naming and renaming city assets. 6.7 concerns resolution R. 2021-32, authorizing additional appropriation to the Open Space, Parks, and Trails Fund for a Bureau of Land Management grant for fire mitigation. 6.8 concerns Mountain Trace Town Homes Building G as built final plat. 6.9 concerns approval of the operating budget policy. 6.10 concerns approval of the general fund reserve policy. Item 6.11 is a request for public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 2-16 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango, changing the starting time for city council meetings from 6:30 PM to 5:30 PM, and the proposed date for this hearing is July 6th, 2021. Items 6.12 and 6.13 are final, final approval of ordinances. 6.12 is Ordinance O. 2021-12, amending Chapter 27 of the Code of the, of Ordinances of the City of Durango, which is the Land Use and Development Code, by the amendment of portions of tables and sections of 2-1-3-6 and 2-2-3-12 of the Code governing vehicle and recreational sale and rentals, and declaring an effective date. And Item 6.13 is Ordinance O. 2021-13, vacating and abandoning a portion of the right-of-way adjacent to property at 301 West 32nd Street, and declaring an effective date.
Thank you very much, Ms. Phillips. That was wonderful. Are there any Are there any items that a councillor would like to remove from the consent agenda for consideration later? Yes, Mayor Protem Noseworthy?
I'd like to remove 6.10, the reserve policy.
Wonderful. Any others?
I was going to remove last minute, so sorry. Not a lot of warning about this, but remove Item 6.5, please, on the MOU with LPEA.
Okay. Any others? No? Do we want to go ahead and get a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Items 6.5 and 6.10?
I'll move to accept the consent agenda with the exceptions listed.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Wonderful. Any further discussion? No? May we have a roll call, Ms. Phillips?
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Noseworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes, thank you. On to the removed consent agenda item 6.5, which is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution, adopting the electric vehicle readiness plan and approving a memorandum of understanding for implementation of the plan jointly with LPEA. Councillor Youssef, would you like to say something?
Yes, this is just a positive comment. I just think it's really great here, and I just wanted to bring it to the community's attention, that when we looked at adopting this plan, we raised concerns about the ability to meet 100% light, what do they call it, light-duty vehicle, fleet vehicles by 2030. And staff has reviewed that and decided that that is going to be a realistic goal. And I just think it's excellent to hear, and I'm excited about the progress that we're making towards our sustainability goals for, you know, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, for improving air quality and performance. And so I just wanted to bring that out. I think that's, I like to touch on these sustainability goals when we make this type of commitment and process, and I just wanted to thank staff as well.
Thank you for bringing that up, so everyone can be aware of it, too. Any other discussion by council? Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 6.5.
I'll second.
Wonderful. Further discussion? No? May we have a roll call, Ms. Phillips?
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes, thank you. On to item, congratulations, Imogen. On to Item 6.10, discussion and possible action regarding approval of the general fund reserve policy. Mayor Protem Noseworthy?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank the Salt Fab and the staff who put all the effort into this. I think it's a wonderful recognition that we need a policy around this. I am concerned about the 2% reduction in revenue resulting in a 2% reduction in expenses. And the reason I say that is because 2% reduction in revenue is probably within the margin of error for the prediction of what our revenue might be. And so I'm concerned that it's overly prescriptive. And I think about my own business, if I were seeing a 2% reduction in revenue, I wouldn't necessarily go out and change things. I would look at things and monitor it, and next year I would make a better prediction. So I don't know if Jose will be able to join us. I know he's in transit. But I would like to suggest that something a little more significant, like a 5% reduction in revenue, could result in a 5% reduction in expenses. And then at the 6%, we would go, we would kick into the use of, of some, of 1% of the reserve, 2% of the reserve fund. The same with the, with the, if we were over budget, just because we were over budget 2%, doesn't mean that we would never increase our expenses. We might save that for another day. So I think, you know, I often think in terms of noise in the data, and I just think this is within the margin of error, and I'd like us to reconsider this as being maybe overly prescriptive.
So I spoke a little bit to the Salt Fab Board on my, I have only been on the board one meeting, so I'm new. And so maybe Melissa, you can jump in, because I know you guys have been working on this for a year. So the 2% was generated by one of the board members when they looked at two big events in the last, I think, 15, 10, 15 years, the pandemic, and then an event 10 years ago where our budget dropped below 2%. And then we went to some, you know, cost-cutting, furlough, that sort of thing. But that was where the 2% came from, was, I believe, and Cynthia, I know, I think she's on, she might be able to like jump in here a little bit, because she said it was just over 2%, I believe, and I know we were predicting much more than that for the pandemic. And in the language, it says we don't have to go into the fund. It's just, we have the opportunity to do that. I guess the, I guess we need to come up with, as a council, with the number that we want. Where do services, like, for constituents stop? Is it, I mean, if we have a $40 million budget, 2% is $800,000, 5% is 2 million, like, what, where's that number, and when do we want to draw from that reserve? And, but we still have the option. It's not like we have to. I would think that we would still look at our, you know, all of the options that we did even during the pandemic. But maybe Jose or Cynthia or Melissa, I don't know, either one have more information.
That was a great answer. And Jose, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I would just add, I don't see Cynthia here. I wish she was here, because she was actively involved as well.
The attendees, I see her in the attendees, sorry.
Well, let's, if we can bring her in, I'd love to have her comment. I would add that I, you're 100% correct, too, Councillor Buell, in their noted suggestion that this is a policy and it is not, you know, that every different, every different situation might need to be analyzed by council at the time. And they did look at historical records and historical past, but I also would love to hear from Cynthia.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Youssef. So you're all right on the mark. One of the items that we can use reserve for according to this policy is a severe economic downturn. So then the question was, what constitutes a severe economic downturn? So we looked at the history of sales tax collections, and it was only in a couple of occasions that it actually dipped below that 2% mark, and that was the COVID, and then back in the Great Recession all those years ago. So that was really sort of the basis for that 2% mark. I do agree with Councillor Noseworthy, excuse me, Mayor Protem Noseworthy, that, you know, 2% is probably a level at which you want to start paying close attention and really monitoring it and not necessarily take action, but unless it continues to decline. And that that 5% mark would be, I think, inappropriate, want to actually trigger some action. And the 2% would be a heightened awareness level.
And thank you, Cynthia. If I may, too, there's a couple of comments I wanted to make. One is that I don't have the records in front of me for prior to 2019, but in 2019, we added $1.9 million to the reserve in the general fund, and in 2020, we added $1.5 million, which both those years far exceeded that 2% at 800K. In 2021, we're projected to add only 611, I say only, that's significant. So, and right now, we're at a 29% reserve level budgeted for that, and I'm assuming that what we're talking about is if we only had a 25% reserve level, which is what was recommended by the, by the Salt Fab, that would be the point in time at which time we would take the 2% decrease in expenditures. Because if we are actually over our reserve, which we are right now by 29%, which is 2, $1.4 million or something like that, I don't know that we should be reducing expenditures when we have quote-unquote excess reserves. So how does this policy apply to that?
So you're absolutely right that if anything in excess of that 25% is considered unassigned and able to be used for, for whatever purpose council desires, you know, deploy those funds for whatever, it's when, when we dip into that reserve. That's this, I'm not sure that that's really answering your question. You articulated it much better than I am, that we have other options before we get to the 2% excess or 5% excess that would affect that reserve level.
Well, additionally, though, too, what I was thinking, what I kind of like about this, actually, is it does preserve that, what we've been calling the opportunity reserve. We, would allow us to dip into our 25% reserve on a 2% drop and not have to touch the opportunity reserve, which would leave us money in the following year or year thereafter to robustly come out of that. So I'm actually thinking that this might not be such a bad thing.
So, so right, in order to have the opportunity reserve or contingency reserve, however you want to categorize that, for that to be included in the 25%, it would need to be an official action that sets aside that amount. It's, that's just the criteria for those designations of fund balance. For, for it to be considered committed or assigned, it has to be officially acted on by the city council. Otherwise, it sits out in, outside of that 25% reserve, and it's in the unassigned, that can be deployed, you know, however you see fit. But in order for it to be included inside the 25%. Now, that 25%, you know, bigger that number is, the less that leaves of the unassigned and available to be deployed, however council sees fit, you know, gets smaller. But if you move it up inside, it gives you two places to tap into for those opportunities and contingent items.
Well, so what I was meaning was leave it outside the 25% if it's, if it's in excess of 25%. But that we could use our 25% reserve and leave the opportunity reserve there for the following year. So we would, we could delve into our reserve, the 25% reserve, without spending the excess first. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, okay. Just want, just making sure we had that variety. Mayor Protem Noseworthy?
Two things, and two different questions. One, and Jessica or Melissa, please jump in, but my question is, when the Salt Fab was thinking about this, did they under, were they thinking in terms of the previous way budgeting was handled, which was budget over, approved budget over approved budget, rather than actuals? And so that's just kind of one question to help me as I think about it. But more importantly, I saw Jose on the call, and Cynthia, you've given a rationale for a 5% resulting in a reduction in expenditures. And I wanted to hear from Jose as a city manager, is this, could this be too prescriptive and tie your hands in such a way that you really need the flexibility to be a little more just watching something and responding accordingly, but not necessarily dictated to do so?
I would say to that, that 2% is, if I'm a bit of a margin, I have some projections.
Jose, you're breaking up significantly. Maybe you should try going off video and see whether or not just your audio comes Wonderful. Jose, please leave your video off, and let's see if we can hear you.
Let's see if this works better. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The, the, usually when I see percentage management, I would be that that's something that could necessarily be, you know, an error or something that you cautious of. 5% would be something that I would see more of a, an area of where we would want people to start making those changes.
Okay.
Go into the table again.
Yeah, I know what I think, what I think you said, which is that at 2%, it does seem like it could be in just an error in estimating, whereas 5%, it would be something that you would be concerned about. And so it sounded like you were recommending the 5% versus the 2%.
I recommend 5%. 2% is, it does mean that we, that's something we need to take a look at. 5% I think is a part where we would definitely need to take action.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further discussion or questions?
And Cynthia, that's your recommendation as well?
Yes.
If you're the one that would have to implement all of this.
Yes.
So rather than the 2% is currently recommended, we would, that it would be 5% when it would kick in? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, correct.
In this policy, the reserve drawdown schedule, then you'll just change it to 5%, 10%, and 15%. So there'll be three columns.
Correct. That would make the most sense, to remove the 2% and 6% and replace it with a 5%.
And that would apply for both a decrease in revenue and an increase in revenue.
Well, the, the increase in revenue speaks to if we have to replenish. So if we, if we have dipped into that reserve, then how do we replenish it? And then that's where the chart comes into play of the, when revenues exceed an amount, here's how we apply that excess. Thank you, thank you.
So it wouldn't just be because revenues have gone up, it would be because if we depleted the reserve previously, how we would replace it, right?
Correct, correct.
All right. So do we have a motion on this item?
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the reserve policy with the changes described by Melissa, going to 5%, 10%, and 15%.
And then the only other, sorry, I'm not sure if now is timed. I would second that, but I.
Yeah, go ahead and second it, and then we'll have some discussion. If we need to revise it, we will.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Councillor Youssef, any further discussion?
I just was going to say we should further clarify the following two columns underneath the 5% of the reserve drawdown schedule accordingly, like we did at 10% and 15%. So I'm, I'm curious, or I'm questioning, question to council of what that would be, how much we would reduce annual expenditures by, and then draw down reserves by under that policy of 5%. And maybe Cynthia, you could provide a suggestion?
Well, I would be comfortable with maybe a two, a reducing expenditures by, by 2% and drawing into the reserve by 3% if we hit that 5% reduction.
That's kind of splits the difference there.
Yeah. And it's based in line with their original recommendation of the 2% change, too. So that's not too drastic, right? It's something we can absorb and handle and deal with.
Absolutely.
All righty. Any further discussion?
Yes, just discussion being that if Councillor Buell, if you might, and Cynthia, if you might want to convey to the board that this change was made, and, and we'll see if it is adopted by all of council, but in my situation, I would suggest that when we sit as zones on these boards, you don't want to influence the council. You want to let them arrive at their recommendations, and then we have the opportunity as a council to review it here, which I think is good work done. So if you could just convey that message.
Absolutely.
And thank them for the time that they spent on this and the research.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All righty. Any more discussion? All right, may we have a vote, please?
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Noseworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Okay, so we are on to Item 9, public hearings. We have no legislative and policy-related hearings. We do have a couple of quasi-judicial hearings. So the first one is 9.2.1, a public hearing to consider the South Fork Crater Lot 5 preliminary plan review. And so is there a staff member? Ah, Mark, there you are.
There I am.
Yeah, so we'd love to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Baxter. Can everybody see that? South Fork Crater?
Yes.
Okay. Let me maximize it, and it's thinking, there we go. So this is a preliminary plan for the South Fork Crater Lot 5 R, lot in South Fork near Three Springs. The preliminary plan includes a five-lot subdivision that would coordinate and provide access and utilities grading over the whole property and detention as well. The proposal also includes some amenities such as pedestrian access and placement. The proposal also includes some amenities such as pedestrian access and place-making features like landscaping and high-quality incorporated sign elements. This is a map of where the property is located. It's just north of the traffic circle off Highway 160 and west of Three Springs, and you've probably seen some dirt being moved around across the south or west corner of this property, and that's a Maverick gas station. So these areas are just now starting to get developed. This is a planned development that has a three-step process. We're in the second step right now, which is the preliminary review, and we get fairly detailed plans at this stage. This is part of the South Fork master plan, so it's a little bit different from a typical plan. We'll get the really detailed plans at the final plan for each stage. So this creates the lots, and then if someone wants to come in and build a property, then at that point, they submit their building plans and detailed landscaping and lighting plans. And then for any major buildings, we've had some interest from Big R that would go to the design review board. Here's the site plan that we've been talking about, subdivision. So two access points off of Wilson Gold's Drive to cul-de-sacs, and the big lot four is down here, lot five is where Big R has expressed some interest, and then three smaller lots that could possibly house restaurants or smaller retail. And then the Animus River Trail is, comes in from the south and goes along the east side of the property right here. And then along Wilson Gold's Drive, there's the 10-foot multi-use trail along this 5R property. The lot is almost 17 acres, and so there's a lot to be coordinated, especially we want to make sure that we get it right with balancing vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian access. I know that that was the one public comment that we got, and there is direct pedestrian and bicycle access to the River Trail, or there will be to the Smart 160 Trail once this project is done, and that is off here, off the north lot, onto the Smart 160 Trail. One of the big features of the site is that it slopes 70 feet from the north end to the south end. At the same time, this has always been envisioned that there would be, there could be some substantially large footprint buildings out here for retail, so we need to balance slopes while also having these footprints. So instead of having one huge cut slope on the north side where you have to cut down, and then one huge fill slope where you fill up, and then have that wall on the east and south side, we got the designer to incorporate some of that height into more terraces and smaller retaining walls, and so there's a series rather than just one. And one of the important things about the cut and fill on this property is typically we would measure the height of a building from the natural slope, or the natural grade, rather. This really wouldn't work here because there is so much slope, and we've got these competing interests of slope and having big footprints. And so we would want to measure the building height from the adjusted grade, and any significant buildings are going to go to design review, so there'll be an opportunity for staff and the DRB to make sure that what gets built there is going to be appropriate and high-quality design. I threw in the grading plan because I wanted you to see the grades that I'm talking about. So originally along the east side here, and some of the south slopes, these walls were up to about 24, 25 feet high. And so the designer was able to redo that and eliminate the slopes almost completely along the north part of this. And then the entrance for, to the Smart 160 Trail will be up here into the property. And then there are some slopes along the southern portion, and it's really just, you know, it's not feasible to get rid of the slopes entirely. But I think they did a good job, and were sensitive to the terrain and the users of the trail. And here's a map showing, the orange is the Smart 160 Trail, and then these are the other pedestrian facilities. There'll be detached sidewalks along the cul-de-sacs into the properties. There will be an access easement between the two cul-de-sacs, so users of all of these lots will be able to drive internally to get to any of the other lots, which is always good for keeping some traffic off our roads if we can. This is an image of the signage that is, the applicants would like to use. So you can see it's attractive, and it's the high-quality materials and design that the South Fork master plan calls for. Section 6310, the LUDC Governance Conceptual Development Plan Reviews, and in the opinion of staff, the plans that have been submitted, sorry, I should say preliminary, the plans that have been submitted meet those criteria. We received one public comment, as I mentioned earlier, that was from Will Walsh, who is concerned about the impacts of future development on bicycle and pedestrian access. And these lots have always been contemplated to become commercial lots, and so there will be a need to accommodate all three types of access, bicycle, pedestrian, and vehicular. And so those intersections will be built to the safety standards that we have, and there will also be alternate bicycle and pedestrian-only access from the east side of the property. The recommended motion is, it's the recommendation of the city manager that the city council by motion approve the South Fork Crater Lot 5R preliminary development plan and direct the applicant to prepare the final development plan for staff review with all conditions as listed in the staff report and adopted during the public hearing process. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mark. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there an applicant that would like to do a presentation, Mark?
No, I don't believe so.
All righty. And do we have any public testimony on this?
Mayor, I do have one person, Sheri Vaillier, if I pronounce your last name correctly, who has raised her hand. I will go ahead and bring her in and put three minutes on the clock.
Actually, under quasi-judicial hearings, I believe that it's five minutes per person.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sheri should be showing up there. Sheri, you've been promoted to panelist. If you would like to unmute your microphone.
Hopefully, I'm unmuted now. Am I unmuted?
You are. Thank you.
Thank you. I simply had a question in your bicycle and pedestrian access. Did you contemplate wheelchair access, safe wheelchair access? I'm a wheelchair user, so it's something that I consider all the time.
Right. Mark, do you have a requirement?
Yeah. Whenever the city builds new infrastructure like this, sidewalks or the trail, it has to be the ADA standards. So I don't have a plan set in front of me. I'd have to defer to the engineer who designed it, but you know, it's something that we have to do. And so those maximum slopes and cross slopes would be something that's designed into the plans as well. And some of the connections that are going to happen in the future haven't, have not been designed yet. For example, Lot 5 down to the orange here to the Smart 160 Trail that has not been designed. And then the internal connections between the lots, those have not been designed either, but safe pedestrian access was something that we specifically talked about. So at the final plan stage, when these individual plans come in for development of Lot 4, of Lot 3, there'll be some more work done on making sure that pedestrian access occurs, and the wheelchair access is obviously an important part of that.
Sheri, do you have any other questions?
Thank you. I was just concerned with safe wheelchair access, especially in that space between Lot 1 and say Lot 5.
Great. Thank you so much for bringing that up. That's very important to us. Are there any other public comments?
I do not see any other hands raised, Mayor.
All righty. Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the public testimony and see if council has any questions for staff. And I can't see you, councilors, because we're on the stacked, so you'll just need to call out. Nope? All righty.
Well, I would like to address the person's public comment very briefly, if I may, about wheelchair access. I just wanted to state that both the Multimodal Advisory Board and also within that, the Parks and Rec are really looking at not just meeting minimum standards for ADA, but really addressing what makes for an inclusive environment for people who might need mobility assist devices. And a good example of that is as we're looking at an underpass on 32nd Street, there's a subcommittee of the Community Relations Commission that really works on accessibility, and they've been meeting with Parks and Rec. So I encourage the person who spoke to also reach out. We always welcome that kind of feedback for what would make for an inclusive environment for people. Thank you.
Well spoken. Thank you. Any other discussion by council or questions? Nope? So do I have a motion from a counselor about this project?
I will move to approve the South Fork Crater Lot 5R preliminary development plan and direct the applicant to prepare the final development plan for staff review with all the conditions as listed in the staff report and adopted during the public hearing process.
A second. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please? Whoops.
Mayor Potem Noseworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Yusef?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. And now we're on to 9.2.2, a public hearing to consider the Boxcar Landing Conceptual Plan Review. And is our, who is our staff member, Mark? Is that you again?
It's me again.
Wonderful. Go for it.
So can everyone see Boxcar Landing on your screens?
Yes.
Okay. Let me maximize that. And it's slow for some reason. There we go. This is a conceptual development plan review, and it's for 162 apartments on the 7.1 acre lot at 3801 Main Avenue. That's just behind and above the Hampton Inn on the north part of Main Avenue. There would be one- and two-bedroom units in 10 buildings, and they would be rented at market rates, and there would be 191 parking spaces. Here's a map of the property. You may recognize this. This is, the second time it's been to city council in the last six months, and then it went once before the end of, well, to planning commission. So you've only seen it once before, but this is the third review. Here's the main entrance off of Main Avenue, and then the CDOT building is also up here, and the Vaillier Mercy Housing is to the south. This is also a PD's, and we're in the conceptual stage right now. At the conceptual stage, the important part is not so much the detailed engineering and design plans, it's to make sure that the project can work. So to the big items like density, access, utilities, to those things, are they viable? And then at the next stage, we get more detailed building designs, some more details on access and utilities, the details on those, things like trash and recycling collection, landscaping and lighting. This is a site plan of the project, and you can see how it's distributed among these different buildings. You know, it's really significant change that city council adopted earlier this year when they reduced the multifamily parking standards. This would have had more than 300 parking spaces. And at the planning commission hearing, the applicant stated what makes this project viable is the city adopting parking standards that are more in line with what other communities have, because building materials aren't getting any cheaper right now. So that was, that was good timing. I've got a series of renderings. I'm not going to dwell on these, but we can come back and look at these later on in the presentation or the public discussion if we need to. There's Main Avenue, the bottom, and then the buildings are at the back. This is a view coming in from the north side of town. This is an exhibit that shows the amenities that the applicant plans to provide. So we've got a little open space, dock play areas, there's some indoor amenities as well. Pool table would be one, some cookout areas here south of the main building, and also some play structures on the northeast side of the main building. And then they'd also spruce up the X-Rock access area. There's a trail here that's been here for many years that's going to remain. They would add a few things at the entrance to that X-Rock trail. So we have an idea of density. It's about 23.7 units per acre. They've shown us generally how the access and utilities are going to work, as well as detention. And the owner of the Hampton Inn, just to the south, during really intense rainstorms, he does get run off into his parking lot, so that's one of the things we would address. One of the most important parts about this project is the rockfall barrier. It's, it's very big, or it will be very big once it's built. It's tall and it's thick because it has to be able to stop rocks coming down Animus Mountain. It also has to be tall enough to keep them from bouncing over. And so as described in the staff report, there's a long section about that. And then also the amenities, as I showed you in that exhibit previously. We don't want the residents here to access the Mercy Housing project to the south unless it's an emergency, so it would be a gated emergency access there. They should use the main access point onto Main Avenue. But bicyclists and pedestrians will still be able to use that south access point and will make it easy to use, so you don't have to duck under it or anything. It'll be purposely designed. And then, so one thing that Counselor Baxter, I'm sorry, Mayor Baxter, asked me in an email, which you should have all seen the responses, was about housing, affordable housing for this project. The city of Durango has a fair share ordinance that applies to for-sale housing. We do not have any ordinance or legislation on rental housing. We asked if the applicant would voluntarily provide some affordable housing, and this is really something that they would have to dig down into. And I think at the next stage, you know, if they have a pro forma or run the numbers and see if that would work, that would be great. We can't tell them to, you know, maybe they can do it. One of the things that we've offered up is we would increase the density above what is typically allowed in order to get affordable units that are, you know, have a long-term affordability component. But as I said, that's strictly voluntary. Another component of this, and this relates to comments we've gotten from the neighbors, both at this review and the previous review, and that's concern for people who access directly onto, well, they access onto Main Avenue whenever they have to leave their homes, and it's getting harder essentially to turn left. So the city is going to engage with CDOT and start working on an intergovernmental agreement to create an access control plan. It's a pretty long process to go through the IGA and then creating the access control plan. It'll take maybe two and a half years, and at that point, they'll get to where they can start actually implementing improvements along North Main that can make life easier for people who live along that corridor. So some of those improvements could be medians, landscaped on possible traffic signals, improving or implementing safe pedestrian crossings, improving ADA access in sidewalks, facilitation of reduced speed, and improved safety generally. This review is subject to 6310 of the LUDC for conceptual development plans, and in the opinion of staff, it meets all the criteria. We did have one public comment, and that's a resident of the Pioneer Park neighborhood, which is on the other side of Main Avenue, and he, he sent us a comment for this review as well as for the previous review late last year. That was concerning getting in and out of his neighborhood. And the recommended motion is, it's the recommendation of the city manager that the city council by motion approve the Boxcar Landing Conceptual Development Plan and direct the applicant to prepare the preliminary development plan for review with all conditions as listed in the staff as listed in the staff report and adopted during the public hearing process. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mark. I'm going to open the public hearing, and is there an applicant who would like to make a presentation?
Tracy Reynolds is representing the developer, and he did not plan to make a presentation.
Okay, great. Do we have any public comments?
We do not, Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry. We do have one with Lisa Blumquist with Home Sun. Lisa, let me go ahead and bring you in. All right, Lisa, do you want to unmute yourself? You can go ahead and speak.
Can I hear you?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. So because this is rental housing, this is really the, I'm hearing of it, but, but just want to speak kind of generally in support of it, and just to note that rental housing, certainly of this type, is necessarily workforce housing. It's not going to be people's second homes. People are not going to be renting these either, they're, they're not going to be renting these as their second homes. They're not $2 million homes. They are going to be workforce housing. So just kind of generally, I think that this is, is very much needed housing for people who are seeking to live and work in our community, and just wanted to speak in support of it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Lisa. Any other public testimony?
There is nobody else who has raised their hand.
Okay. Thank you very much. In that case, I will close the public testimony and ask council if there are questions.
I'll just say that the design has improved very much from the original, what was originally put forward and that the Planning Commission did not support. So it's been great to have the developer and the architects all working together to come up with a design that, that could be supported by the Planning Commission.
Wonderful. Thank you. I had a couple of comments, and one of them, Mark, you answered in your response to me, which is that yes, this will go through the design review board. I just wanted to make sure, because with the volume of units, it's possible that it could look cookie cutter, if you will. I don't know if that's the right word, but to show some, to make sure we have some creativity up there so that all the units don't look exactly the same side by side. So I appreciate that we'll be going through that process with the design review board.
Yeah, and it'll go, if it's approved tonight, it would go to the design review board before coming back to council at the preliminary stage.
Wonderful. The other question I had is with all the amenities there, is there an overall manager of this rental complex?
You know, I think I would defer questions about the maintenance or the operation to the applicant.
Okay, well, so then the follow-up to that really is, will there be some sort of agreement about the standard of care for those amenities so that someone's taking care of them?
You know, I don't think that we put something like that in our agreements in the past, but we are doing a plan development agreement, which is a contractual document, and if you want to adopt that as a condition of approval, then it is a condition of approval, and it would happen.
Well, I would be concerned, since we don't know what the management status is, I would be concerned that there's the possibility for the amenities to just degrade and not be taken care of. But I don't know if that should, is something we should do now, or would you recommend that for the conversation?
I mean, that's something that could, that could happen now or at the next stage. I do know Dennis Shaw, who's the developer, when he was talking about this at the Planning Commission meeting, was saying this is comparable in terms of the quality and the design to Rocket Point. So, you know, for the foreseeable future, it should be well-maintained and nice, you know, whether 30, 40 years from now, you know, that can be a condition, yeah.
So the other question I had, this is not concerning the project itself, but are there any other options that we could do now and not have to wait three to 10 years for CDOT to help the access for people onto Main from those compromised areas, or the areas not being compromised by this project, but that are generally challenged by getting out onto Main anyway and with the traffic?
Yeah, you're really, you put me on the spot with that question, because we had Amber Blake at the Planning Commission meeting, and she was the one who provided me with that information. And so in terms of spot improvements, I, I just don't know the answer to that. And that's something I can find out, and, you know, I could email council the answer, but I don't have it right now.
That would be great. I, I think we should consider, you know, what can we do now? If there are options for us and opportunities for us, even if they're temporary, how can we help?
Okay.
And then I'm going to, I'm going to go back to my, you know, my old thing, which is the fair share plan does not include provisions for rental housing. And if we keep waiting till we redo the entire fair share plan, we're going to miss out on a whole bunch of stuff. So, you know, maybe we need to think about a separate plan that just talks rental or something, or just revise one chapter. I don't know, but I'm going to keep pushing on it until it happens, because this is, this is another project where we're losing an opportunity. I recognize it's workforce housing, but I also recognize that we've had several projects, one in Three Springs and one in the Escalante area, Rocket, whose prices, rental prices have escalated drastically in the last two years, and our community can't sustain that. So I'm just going to push on you again.
Okay. Yeah, I would just add to that, not really as a direct response, but we are working on an RFP right now to update fair share, which we're going to release really soon, within the next week or two, and an analysis of rental fair share is going to be part of that RFP. And, and that's in response to the state of Colorado just passed a law, I think it was last month, allowing that to happen, and so.
Right. Right. And, and I understand that, so just pushing on you, because how long did the RFP take to fill, and then how long does the study take?
Right.
On and on and on. So I just want you to know I'm aware of it. Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to actually, if I may, jump in to follow up on the mayor's comment. Mark, I will share that I heard from a constituent this past week who lives in the area around Rocket Point and behind the Home Depot area. And this person said, you know, the rent went up $1,000 in a, in a unit next door to her, and this person lives in real concern that her, that their rent will be increased by $1,000 a month, and that is not something they can afford. And so, again, I appreciate that we're going through an RFP process. I just want to ask also, is there a way to fast-track consideration of in-loof fees for, or rental, something to fast-track this, so we're not waiting eight months to have some recommendation?
And we, we recognize, Mark, that you're not the decision-maker in this conversation here, but please make sure that it's heard by those who are.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comment or questions by council? No. All righty. Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and do we have a motion on this project?
Mark, could you put that motion up on the screen? Unless Jessica, who's always ready, might have it.
I'll move to approve the Boxcar Landing conceptual development plan and direct the applicant to prepare the preliminary development plan for review with all conditions as listed in the staff report and adopted during the public hearing process.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mark, I would just recommend that when it goes back through the planning department or the Planning Commission and everything, that you talk about those amenities and, and what's, how it's going to be managed, so that we have answers to that when it comes back.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? May we have a vote, please?
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Thank you. And now we are on to 9.2.3, a public hearing to consider the Fairingway Plan Development Amendment. And who will be our staff person for this project? Is this Dan?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you.
Lovely family. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. That was unintentional, but thank you. You're seeing the presentation now, looks like it.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thanks much. Dan Arrentano with the Community Development Department. This is the Fairingway condominiums plan development amendment. So you just heard a proposal for a conceptual plan for a new plan development. So this is an amendment to an existing plan development, and the purpose of the amendment is to allow an existing onsite property manager's residential unit, which is currently owned by the HOA at Fairingway, to be subdivided off of the common element and sold as a condominium. Subdivisions within an existing PD plan development, I'll be abbreviating that to PD, require a major amendment and the approval of a two-thirds majority of owners before it can be processed. As part of this, staff has recommended clarifying some language related to vacation rental uses in Fairingway. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. Here's a context map showing the location of the development, so that's Fairingway right in the center of the screen there. It's up off of Geek Line Gulch, near the college, just a little bit south of the traffic circle. And here's a zoomed-in aerial of the property. So there are 50 condominiums currently at Fairingway, as well as a kind of a clubhouse, an office, and pool area there. And then the manager's unit is circled at the bottom there in red, and it is a standalone structure, as you can see in these photos. It's a bit unique for Fairingway in that it's a little bit bigger than most of the typical condos up there. It does have its own two-car garage, and of course, it's already built and pretty much ready to go. So to go into a little background on Fairingway, so it was approved in 1984 as a PD, was one of the first ones in the city with city, sorry, with 50 condominiums, and the principal use was approved as a motel, which is a bit unusual. The motel use at the time presumably was what resulted in the need for an onsite live-in manager and manager's unit in question, but really more contemporary interpretation of that motel language would really classify these units as potential vacation rentals. And the proposed amendment will clarify that. So the HOA at this point feels that the manager's unit would be better used as the 51st condo for the development. It's sitting vacant and has been vacant for quite some time. And since it's a standalone building, it has its own parking and is ready for occupancy, doesn't need any new construction or changes to the site, it's a pretty simple change to split that off and sell that unit to a separate private party. We did receive one comment just today in support of this proposed amendment from someone that lived or owned, owned one of the condos at Fairingway. Just to go into the alignment with codes and some of our plans, so LUDC criteria from 63107 regulates amendments to planned developments. One of the requirements, as I mentioned, is written consent from a two-thirds majority of the property owners. This has been gathered by the applicant and was submitted and is on file. And the other requirement is that there needs to have been changes in market conditions or city policies since the development was approved that would really justify the update to the planned development. And certainly, there have been significant changes since 1984, so staff feels that that requirement has been met. As for alignment with the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan, it's obviously a really minor change, certainly isn't going to have any measurable impact on housing affordability to add this unit into the market, but it will allow a currently vacant unit to, to be occupied, sold and hopefully used, excuse me, residentially. And then with no change in density or use on the property, the proposal will remain in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So the Planning Commission heard this proposal back at the end of last month. It's a pretty brief discussion on this topic, but there was some questions and concerns about the motel and vacation rental uses within the development. One of our commissioners questioned the lack of a cap on the number of vacation rental permits that can be issued here. Typically, in planned developments where vacation rentals are allowed, we do have a cap on the total number of permits that would be available. In this case, because it was originally permitted and approved, sorry, as a motel, there was no cap, and since it's such a minor change, we were kind of discouraged from recommending further restrictions on that use within the development. So the Planning Commission found that the request generally complied with the intent of the LUDC and recommended approval on a five-to-zero vote. So just to conclude, this is really a pretty simple request. Again, no new construction or changes of use on the property. The proposal does comply with the code requirements for a major PD amendment, and updating that vacation rental language in the amendment will clarify procedures for future residents. So I have a recommended motion on screen, which is the same as what you guys have in your packet, and that's all I've got for you. So I'll pass it back to you, Mayor Baxter.
Thank you very much, Dan. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing then, and is there a presentation by the applicant?
I don't believe we have a presentation, but we do have Mr. David Furman and Ms. Vicki Albert with us who are available for questions.
All right. And then how about public testimony? Do we have anyone who's interested in that?
No one has raised their hand, Mayor.
I'm going to give it just a moment, and I'll close the public testimony. Are there any questions by council? Okay, I did have one. Is this project as it stands, are they currently registered as all vacation rentals, and are they paying all the applicable lodgers' tax and sales taxes required?
Not all of the units are vacation rentals. I think around half, let's say there's 23 permits that we've issued for the development. Certainly, those 23 have approved permits and business licenses and should be submitting the required lodgers' and sales taxes.
And how many units did you say there were in total?
50 currently, right now.
So would there still just remain the 23 vacation rentals, or would they all be available for that?
So they all have the option to pursue vacation rental use, which is kind of the unique part about this development. And again, that goes back to the original approval as a motel, so there's no cap essentially. So yes, 23 is the current number of permits that could feasibly be 50. Hopefully, it will not be, but it's up to the residents, so.
Okay. And I think that's really interesting, that there's this concentration of vacation rentals in one project. I kind of like it, rather than having it impact neighborhoods of single-family homes, et cetera, and so forth. So that's kind of a novel way of doing it. Thank you. Any other discussion by council? No? Okay. Do we have a mo, oh, I'm going to close the public hearing, and do we have a motion by council?
I'll move to approve the proposed major amendment to the Fairingway condominiums planned development and replant with the finding that the proposal complies with the intent of the Land Use Development Code.
Thank you. I'll second.
Wonderful. Any further discussion? Okay, may we have a vote, please?
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, now we're on to Agenda Item 10, which is 10.1, a discussion and possible action regarding the submission, oops, nope, sorry, I got ahead of myself. 9.2.4, a public hearing to consider the Manasoup Kitchen easement, 1100 Avenida del Sol. And do we have a staff member, Leah, or is that you?
Yes.
Wonderful.
I'll be presenting. Good evening, council members. Leah Campbell with the Community Development Department. I'm going to show my screen.
Yep, there.
Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. I'll be presenting on the Manasoup Kitchen easement. I have a very brief presentation for you. Fast Track Communications is requesting an easement across city-owned property at 1100 Avenida del Sol, the property that is shown here on the map. The easement will be 20 feet wide and approximately 794 linear feet between Russe Ave and Elevita Court. Fast Track is proposing to install fiber optic conduit within this easement, which will service Manasoup Kitchen and the Elevita Court neighborhood. The granting of this easement will meet the Comprehensive Plan's Chapter 9 initiative of striving to provide utilities to residents in a reliable manner, and it will meet the effective infrastructure network objective of the strategic plan. So here is the recommended motion. I I will stop sharing, but I can bring this back up if you need it to make the motion.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
There's not.
No, thank you. Is there any public testimony?
No one has raised their hand, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you very much. Then I will close the public testimony. And are there questions by council? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And do we have a motion by council?
I'll move to conduct a public hearing to consider public testimony and comment, and thereafter, direct the city— did I read the name wrong? Oh, yeah. City attorney to prepare an ordinance for first reading at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting, authorizing the granting of an easement to Fast Track Communications as described in the attached documentation.
I'll thank Jessica for always having that and second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes. All right, now we're on to Agenda Item 10.1. Discussion and possible action regarding the submission of an additional letter from the city council to the district court regarding payment of restitution and conditions of the sentence previously imposed on the former finance director. Mr. Nelson, do you have a conversation for us?
Very little. I will open this to just remind everyone that this item was on the council agenda in April prior to a hearing that was scheduled at that time, in May, for the district court's review of the sentence that was imposed on Ms. Brown back in January. The judge did indicate at that time that he would engage in a, you know, that that sentence was stayed and that he would engage in a review of that sentence prior to it finally being imposed. That date that was originally set for a May 14 review was continued to June 25th. So I know council had desired to at least have an opportunity to discuss the question of whether or not council would like to submit an additional letter to court prior to that hearing on the 25th. The city council did submit a letter originally prior to the sentencing in January. So this was put on the agenda for council to have an opportunity to discuss an additional letter.
Wonderful. Council, do we have any questions or comments on this topic?
I have a question for Dirk, and I've read the letters in support of Ms. Brown. Can you verify if, you know, there's a reference in Julie's letter that she's cashed in her retirement account? Would that account be sufficient to cover the full restitution that's required or that the judge said? I'm just trying to get a sense of the numbers, if you wouldn't mind going over that for all of us.
Yeah, I don't have exact numbers on the amount of her retirement account, but my understanding is that that account has been— that she has accessed all the amounts that are in that account at this point. So she has made an original payment prior to the original sentencing. As I inform council, there is an additional payment from her, a substantial payment pending, and then there have been some smaller payments that have also been made. But I do think that— my understanding is that that— that her access— that she has accessed all the funds that she had available through the retirement account. But I will add, but I don't know how those have been applied. I don't have that information. Okay.
So I believe that your further email today said there was now a total of approximately $439,000 that had been paid toward the original $712,000 that was embezzled.
But the city to date has only received roughly 250 of that amount. The other payment is pending. Still, it has not yet been distributed to the city as of this afternoon.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying that. Is there any more discussion by council? So I— and when did you say that the next conversation with the judge would be happening?
June 25th, which is Friday. It's roughly 10 days from now. It'll be Friday week. Again, it's scheduled for 11 o'clock.
Will that be a Zoom or an in-person situation?
My understanding is that it could be either. I had—we checked into that a bit, so I think it can either—the court uses WebEx rather than Zoom, but we have the— my understanding is the— now I will have to confirm this before the hearing, but that it can be either one. That you have a choice of being present via WebEx or present in person.
Okay. I personally, as one city councilor, would support either reiterating our current letter that we have before them, saying, you know, just reinforcing that, the same conditions and thoughts that we had. And doing— hopefully, one of us could do it in person. I would not be able to do so. I'm actually on an airplane that day. But I really think that it's very important, and I appreciate what her family and friends have written in their letter. But I also want to say that if that's the attitude we took toward every crime that was committed, then I'm not certain that our criminal system, justice system, not that it works perfectly, but I think people need to be accountable for their actions. And this only happens, you know, over a course of 10 to 12 years. That's a pretty long time to have time to reconsider your actions and realize that they are not moral or ethical or fair to your community, and that didn't occur. And I think when threatened with a jail sentence, people oftentimes, of course, are going to say, "No, no, no, I shouldn't go to jail. I have reformed. I'm different now." But there are so many instances when people need to be accountable for their actions, and I believe this is truly one of them. It was a long-term situation. It was intentional. It was done at least on an annual basis. I can't do anything more than request continued full restitution, whether that means after she's out of jail or not, and jail time, me personally.
You know, I went back to the notes to the meeting in January of the sentencing and the judge's comments, and I'll be the first to say I could have gotten it wrong. So I will look to Dirk as our attorney to make certain. But my notes indicated that her retirement account had sufficient funds in it to handle all restitution. If she cashed that in, that the city could be—with the amount that she was prepared to make at the sentencing, and then by cashing in her retirement, full restitution could be made to the city, and we would be done with it, rather than having this paid back over a 20-year period. So I would be interested, Dirk, in—I know we have to make a decision, but my notes indicate that. I, you know, prove me—please let me know if I'm wrong.
No, I think the judge did say that. And in fact, that was part of the reason why, as I recall, that he indicated that he wanted to be convinced that she had applied all of the resources that she could to pay restitution. I recall him saying that—and I don't know what numbers he had. He didn't mention any specific numbers and so—but I also recall that statement from the judge at that point. But I don't—I don't have—so I do think the question is whether or not she has applied all the resources that she had or has to paying restitution. And that will be a question the judge will need—to will want to address, I'm sure, as part of that review.
As part of what review?
Part of the review on the 25th of June.
That the lawyer—
No, the judge will want to be—right, the—
Okay.
The defendant wanted to make a presentation about that, I assume, and indicate that that is the case. So I don't have any independent information about the numbers that the judge was looking at at that point in January.
Dirk, if I may, mayor, council. Just to let you know, I just got a note from Cynthia that led us—to let me know that all of her retirement funds have not been applied to the city. So I'm assuming that it wasn't her entire retirement fund, so I just wanted to pass that on.
Then I misunderstood. I apologize for that. My understanding is that—well, again, we haven't received all of the funds. There's some funds that haven't been conveyed, so—and there's some confusion about the payments, and I apologize about that. But the court had received some funds that haven't yet been delivered, so that was part of the confusion about what's been paid. So I'm glad Cynthia chimed in, because again, I don't want to inadvertently give incomplete or incorrect information about what the request—her previous request regarding her retirement account. I may have misunderstood what she had done.
Jose, maybe you could clarify just a little bit for us, possibly. What I thought I heard you say was that her retirement account either had not been totally liquidated, or it had been totally liquidated and only a portion of it was being made as an additional payment. And if it had been liquidated, still only a portion of it was being made as payment. So I just wanted to—
I'm going to go with—absolutely, I'll go with C, which is, I can't tell you if it's been liquidated or not, but we haven't received the entire portion of those funds.
That could have been applied to this—
That could have been applied, yes, ma'am.
That embezzling amount, okay.
And that's at this time. In, you know, in a couple days, maybe she does—it could change, but as of right now, that's where we stand.
I would just throw out there to council for consideration that maybe we consider a special meeting to discuss this topic on Tuesday of the next week to see if these funds come in and actually hit our account at the city of Durango and possibly get some clarification on this. It would be helpful for me to understand exactly where we are, unless we just want to do a reiteration of our letter. We already wrote the letter once. To convey that same message is fine, but if we had more specific information, we could actually, you know—
Update it.
Update it more thoroughly, even if it was a 30-minute special meeting just for this topic, so that we can get an update on exactly what has been paid and any more information on that.
I would—I would support Melissa's suggestion. I'd like to know the value of money in the retirement account, if it has truly been all of it liquidated, or if there's still money outstanding in the retirement account, what could still be applied? And I would also add that I would be available to represent city council on next week, Friday, if we chose to do that. And I would be willing to work, as I did in the last time, collecting feedback on any letter that needs to be put together in short order. So I support Melissa's suggestion for a special meeting to have as much information about the restitution that's been provided and outstanding resources available.
And I like the idea of the special meeting also. I do have some other things scheduled that we all do. We have a city council study session at 4:00. So—and I would have to do it before that. I have company coming. Jessica, how does that work for you? What do you think?
I couldn't make that work.
So Jose, would you be willing to take on getting a special meeting for us set up so we can do this?
Absolutely, be happy to.
Wonderful, thank you.
Could I actually just also make a comment that I think we all recognize that this is, you know, people's lives involved here and that there's personal relationships in the community. But I think we're all taking this as a city councilor obligation and responsibility, which doesn't come easy, and I appreciate my colleagues' thoughtfulness that goes into this.
Absolutely. Any other comments? All right, then we will wait until our special meeting to have a further discussion. Thank you. Introduction of ordinances, 11.1. Dan, Mr. Nelson.
Yes, this is an ordinance—this item was submitted to a public hearing at your city council meeting.
Can we read the topic? Let me read the agenda item first. I'm sorry, I messed that. An ordinance approving the annexation and initial zoning for the 1715 Florida Road addition to the city of Durango and declaring an effective date.
Yes, this item was conducted—council conducted a hearing on this item this previous meeting. This is the annexation of the portion of property along Florida Road, which allows the second access to Mountain Trace. So the ordinance has been prepared. This is ordinance O2021-14.
Is there a discussion by council? And do we need to take a vote on this, Dirk?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So do we have—if there's no further discussion at this point, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, I think I can do it, to approve ordinance 2021-14.
Second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes, thank you. And on to 11.2, an ordinance granting a utility easement for the installation of fiber optic telecommunications on city-owned property at Chapman Hill and declaring an effective date.
Yes, this is ordinance O2021-15. This is an item to allow for an easement to enhance fiber optic capabilities in this area. Again, this is ordinance 2021-15.
Is there any conversation by council? Is there a motion by council?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2021-15.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes, thank you. On to Agenda Item 12.1, which is a city update by Jose Madrigal, our city manager.
Yes, we're here in council. Just one item. First of all, thank you very much for your patience with the internet connectivity as I'm on this family vacation, but still happy to be part of the meeting. The big update that we have is just to announce that we did complete the purchase/donation of the 245 acres from Durango Mesa Park Foundation. So we are very excited to get that project moving and acquire those parcels. Secondly, our new Public Works Director, Alison Baker, did start on Monday. She was trying to get on, but she had technical difficulties, but we will introduce her at the next council meeting, and that's my city update.
Wonderful. That's very exciting news on both parts. Thank you. Council, any comments or questions?
Well, I'm going to jump in, Jose, just so you know. Melissa and I were in a meeting, and we were told that the new 911 director was challenged to a push-up contest, and that person could do 50 push-ups, and the other fire department personnel could not match it. Woo-hoo! I just wanted you to know that capability as well in your new hire.
Will do. Thank you very much.
That's wonderful. I love it.
And I just was going to say congratulations again, Jose, and thank you to staff for prioritizing the Durango Mesa Park land transfer and making that happen and focusing on that. Thank you, Dirk. I know that was a lot of work, and I just wanted to shout out to staff on that.
Any other comments?
Absolutely, thank you.
And I agree with all of that. I think it's been—we put a lot of hard work into it. The foundation's put a lot of hard work into it. Everybody involved has, and I think that the big plan and the positive impact this will have on our community is well on its way to happening. So it's very exciting. Thank you. On to Agenda Item 13, which is council reports and actions. And again, we also have the 13.1, the boards and commissions, council liaison reports. So let's combine them if we can, rather than doing six or eight different comments. Would anyone like to go first? Okay.
Happy to jump in.
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So I have two to report on. One is the Infrastructure Advisory Board meeting that met last week, Monday, and we talked about a variety of topics. The drought monitoring update. I think we all know that 19 or 20 years of drought may become the new normal. And Jared talked basically about right now, they're monitoring it, and they need to be nimble and respond when needed, but they are watching that pretty carefully. We talked about streets and alleys, and there—if you go—those of you that may— We talked about streets and alleys, and there, if you go, those of you that may be listening, if you go to the agenda packet for that meeting last week, Monday, there's a whole listing of the alleys, and the commitment really is to spend $6 million over the next five years addressing alleys. Some of them are being slated, and there was a discussion, Counselor Bozeman's is not here tonight, but there was some discussion about this vertical treatment plan, and it may or may not work as people had hoped, so that is still being looked on. We talked about the water survey. I think there are about 300 people that responded to it. For the most part, it was quite positive about the quality of the water, the quantity of the water for consumption. We talked about two other items, and one will lead into the other, the Forest Health Plan. I'm going to follow that with an update on Melissa and my meeting there, but we also talked about the Water Master Plan, and I'll acknowledge that I was rather confused because I actually thought the IAV would be discussing the Water Master Plan, the draft plan that had been sent out, but to the council, but that was not the case, it was just an update on that, and it actually was a bit of confusion that the council was looking at it in the retreat, and the IAV was not discussing it as part of their advisory board meeting. And at one point, I was actually asked, well, does council even want our viewpoint on this? And I said, well, I'm one councilor member, and yes, I want your viewpoint on it as an advisory board. So I think there was some timing issues of who was reviewing that and everything that kind of led to some confusion, but that will be on the agenda next month, and that meeting will not be on its normal Monday because that's the 5th of July, so it'll be the 12th of July, we'll have that. And then we've been talking at the IAV about the Forest Health and the health of our watershed, and I gave an update on the work that Melissa and I have been doing on the working group with them, recognizing that I was actually sharing it with them prior to council, so I wanted to make certain we covered that tonight. So Mayor, if I may, I'd go right into an update on the working group that Melissa and I are participating in on the wildfire and watershed protection. Thanks. So we've had, Melissa gave you an update about two weeks ago on that, and we came up with really focusing on a proof of concept that would address wildfire and watershed, particularly the Florida Road, and also areas, because of the prevailing winds, we needed to really look within the county as a way of protecting the city assets. So since then, and I'll kind of give an overview, and I'll then punt to Melissa to fill in on anything I've missed, but we had a great meeting with Hal Doherty, our fire chief, and he is totally on board. He says he feels very much that this is what we need to be doing. He's now joining our working group, which also consists of Marcia Porter Norton, Ellen Roberts, and Erin Kempel from Mountain Studies Institute, so this group meets every Monday to kind of work through the details of this. He's on board, totally recognizes it, and he's actually volunteering some of his staff time, who he could make it work as an in-kind contribution. They have technical skills in the mitigation, so that's kind of his part of helping us as we think through this fund. So one of the things that we've come up with, and we're very close, we have a kind of a concept paper that describes it. I'm just going to give a few highlights, and then I'm going to ask for, make a request of council, but really, this work is, it's looking at private lands that need to be addressed within the greater area, and we're looking at, you know, the combination of the city, the county, the fire district now, and hopefully, other cities would join in on this effort that we're trying to create. And right now, several bills have just passed in the Colorado Legislature, and those funds will be available starting July 1. So there's some real urgency to get this fund created so that we can access those resources. So we want to make certain that we're going to focus on the economic and social assets such as utility lines, homes, trails, road networks, and businesses. We want to make certain that the mitigation is done based on sound science and best practices, so we're looking at water quality, protection of the watershed, and wildlife values. We want to support the local economy by using local workforce and providing opportunities for successful, sustainable timber-related businesses, and Melissa and I are going next week to actually meet with some of these businesses that have said they could benefit from such an activity. And then we want to make certain that the landowners and property owners are fully engaged in this. So what I, we are asking council to consider is a special meeting next week, Tuesday, adding on to this, where we will have the concept paper available for council to review, we'll have a request for funding for an appropriation to help kickstart this fund, and we'll have a general outline of how we plan to use this money going, at the start, building on it. And I think that, I will also say, for me, this is getting something started, it's an opportunity to really demonstrate the proof of concept. Once we've shown that this works, we're all working together, that the property owners value it, I think it can really go to scale, but I'd also like Melissa to have a chance to add in anything I missed in her own opinions as well.
Thank you, I think you did an excellent job. Mayor Protim Nowsworthy, really good job of describing it. We've had several meetings, and like Barbara said, there's just a lot of opportunity in the creation of this partnership, and it's very much a collaborative effort, and it's with the city and the county and the Durango Fire Department, Fire Protection District, and that, that higher-level vision of collaboration amongst the parties is key in the establishment of this fund, because it shows our collaborative work together in addition with Rocky Mountain Restoration Initiative, the U.S. Forest Service, and all of the other organizations out that are working on fire mitigation. So it's really an effort to pull all the groups together and to create this fire mitigation proposal that eliminates the gaps. And so then we're, we're looking at areas, geographical areas, that are determined by extensive experienced mapping experts who determine where we focus, and we really create these fire mitigation barriers together as a, as a region. So it's really, I'm seeing it as just an amazing opportunity to be, you know, a leader in the state and to, to leverage several times over local matches with federal and state funds, because the nation and the state recognizes, especially down here in southwest Colorado, we are at major fire risk, and so we have an opportunity here that we're very much trying to capitalize on. That's why we're trying to get this meeting next week, a special meeting just as far as the allocation goes, because we don't want to wait until the middle of July. It's, it's, we need to move now.
And thank you, Melissa. I just thought of one more point, which is, other counties are up and running, and they're applying for this funding, and it is going to be competitive. So again, there's urgency in creating this bucket, this fund, so that we can actually demonstrate our own commitment through a financial contribution, but also have an opportunity to apply for and get some funding.
Counselor Buell, do you have any questions or thoughts?
No, I'm, yes, I agree, I'm up for the meeting, and then I have an update for mine, but I don't know if we need to finish this first.
Okay, so I had, if Jose's still here, I had a question about our study session.
I do.
I don't remember our agenda for that. Is there room to have two different special meetings, if you will, and our study session, or is the study session half the amount of time and then two special meetings? What are we looking at timewise here?
I think what we're looking at is probably let Erin and Kevin and I get together, just as we kind of sort out the agenda with the items that are on there, but I think we're probably going to look at probably having to start early with these items, because we already do have a full, pretty good study session, study session agenda, lodgers tax, sales allocation, I believe is one of the items, so I would think that we would probably need to start early to get all these items in.
Okay, and is it council's consensus that they'd rather do it before than after the study session? Before? Okay, great. All right, thank you, Jose, if you'd work on that, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. Mayor, and if I could, just one thing real fast before we move on, on the Infrastructure Advisory Board and the Water Master Plan, I do just want to provide a little bit of backup on that. That was my decision, it was supposed to go to the Infrastructure Advisory Board on the 7th, but since we had a city council retreat on the 8th and 9th in which it was going to be discussed with specifically a timeline of releasing the plan, we wanted to make sure we didn't get ahead of council, so we, it was my call to wait to find out what came out of that retreat, but it will go to the Infrastructure Advisory Board for them to comment.
Wonderful. Okay, great, thank you for clarifying that. Any other council reports and actions?
I can give an update on the Strategy and Long-Term Finance Advisory Board meeting. We had June 7th. We discussed and finalized for council approval the amended general fund reserve policy and operating budget policy, as we saw earlier. We reviewed the financial excellence and transparency and affordability economic opportunity objectives that are in the city's 2021 strategic plan, as it pertains to the budget and key performance issues associated with the budget. The city's working on the 10-year forecast. Cynthia has drafts for water, sewer, airport, transit, and solid waste. She's going to bring those to the department directors, and then after she works with them and gets their thoughts and approval, she's going to bring them to Salt Fab in August, I believe is her goal. We discussed the development of department performance measures for budget processes with output, outcome, and impact measures. We got a preview from Devon of the Open Gov software and functions and data, and I'm looking, I think we all are looking forward to the potential launch later on this summer, so.
And Counselor Youssef, did you have other things? I didn't mean to preclude you from.
No, not at all. I actually don't. I'm good today, thank you.
Thank you. So I did attend the Natural Ants Preservation Board meeting on June 7th, and we welcomed our new board members, which is always fun to do that, have that transition, and you get some new energy and new thoughts and new ideas, and they were both very contributory and very helpful in the conversations. So mostly, we were looking at things like the Parks and Rec 2020 Year in Review and the draft strategic plan, so there wasn't really a whole lot specific to the Natural Ants Board at that point. Additionally, I spent all day Monday in the Visit Durango Retreat. This was, it was very interesting, and I think the key thing that came out of that was they chose six priorities that fit in with their strategic plan of where to go, and the main one that I think affects council has to do with the concept that the council and the county are their client. They are our marketing agency, and that the responsibility is to their clients, and that what they're doing needs to be in alignment with what city council and the county commissioners see as our vision and our goal and our strategic plans. And one of the other big things that was talked about a lot by, we had two different presentations by facilitators, one was Kathy Ritter, who was the Colorado Board of Colorado Tourism Office Manager, Executive Director for several years, just retired from that to start her own business, and another was Tarika Payne, who is a professor up at the college, and she works on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and they both gave great presentations, and both of them, interestingly enough, focused on the responsibility that the tourism industry is now feeling, the marketing and everyone else feeling toward the community that the tourists are coming to. So what's the impact on the community? How do you mitigate the negative? As Ms. Ritter mentioned, they used to only talk about the positive of getting all the tourists there. Now they realize that there are negative sides that need to be mitigated. So this fell so in line with the conversation of what does our community want from our tourism, and what's the responsibility of that marketing agency, Visit Durango, to their client, which is the city and county of Durango and La Plata County. So there'll be more coming forward. Obviously, council's going to have some, have to have some conversations about what are our expectations, and I also recommended that we do that prior to when their contract comes up for renewal in December, so that we could have that concept included in there, what kind of performance measures, what the expectations were, so that the next year, the next time that our contract comes up for renewal, it's easy to tell. Have they performed what we thought they should do? Are they doing what we thought they should do? Is our community happy with this? Is it working well? And they were, the board, all the board members that were there were very much in alignment that this was very, very important, so we'll be addressing that sometime in the future. Then, was that this morning? Oh, my goodness. I went to the executive, to the Economic Alliance Investor Meeting, and it was the first basically fully in-person meeting. It was great. There was great attendance, everybody was so excited, Counselor Buell was there, I gave a presentation on the things that staff had given me, plus other things that we're doing like with the American Rescue Plan Funds, and one of the, probably, Jessica, you correct me if I'm wrong, but the biggest topic of Region 9 of, oh, I can't think of all the other people who spoke right now, but it's workforce housing. There, the employers and the businesses and the community is workforce housing, got to do it. So then I also wanted to say that Mayor Protim Nowsworthy and I have been working with Erin Hyder, our HR Director, on draft appointee job descriptions, and we've finalized the drafts, so those will be coming to council at the next, for the next city council meeting for approval, so that then when we talk with our appointees about their jobs, we know what their job descriptions are. That was very exciting, we got that finished today. And then Erin will also be setting up an appointee quarterly conversation, because as you may recall, although, Jessica, you weren't involved in this, but we agreed to have check-ins, quarterly check-ins with our appointees, how's it going, what can we help with, what's, what are the challenges, what's going wrong, what's going right, so that when we come to the annual review, hopefully, we don't have as many issues, or no issues at all, and that the annual review has no surprises. So Erin will be scheduling those for us here, and I think by the end of July or August, I can't remember. No, it'll be soon, I'm just going to say soon right now. So that's another exciting thing that we're on. I want to tell the public that next, our next meeting, which is a study session on Tuesday, will be a hybrid study session, and we will have in-person city councilors, and I'm pretty sure it'll also be open to the public, but I haven't verified that. So if, Tom, can you help me with that one?
That is the plan, and actually, tonight's meeting, for all intents, was a hybrid meeting. We had Amy in council chambers, and if somebody had walked in, we would have put them on, so I think we're in good shape.
This is very exciting, thank you very, very much. So not all councilors will be in physical attendance in City Hall next Tuesday, because we are making sure that things will work for the hybrid situation, but public, please come listen and hear what we have to say. I want to say thank you to the people who prepared the agenda. You put times on the agenda items, and it made it so much easier to know that we were behind, ahead, on time. That's, it's wonderful, so thank you very much. And I think that's all. Any other comments? No? All right, thank you, everyone. Good night, have a great week.
Good night, thank you.